Call this meeting to order. Please silence your electronic devices and stand for the invocation by Councilman Mervia.
Thank you, Council President. Please follow us in our Lord's prayer, following the pledge.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily right, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Let me be smart and謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎 謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎謎
Public comments? Communications?
The Low YMCA submitted an application for their healthy living campus groundbreaking on Monday, July 11th at 10:00 a.m. at their location at 211 East Main Street.
Okay. Any questions? I guess if you're good, I'll just let them know. I'm definitely going to be there. I want to see you.
Oh, that I'm going to see.
Okay, so the next one?
And the Bid submitted their request for a box car derby on Saturday, August 27th at 9:30 a.m. This would be kids racing. They're made soapbox cars down Elickit Ave, like in the past.
That's put on by bid, correct? Any questions with concerns over that? The next city council conference and business meeting will be held Monday, July 11th at 7:00 p.m. at City Hall Council Boardroom, second floor, city center. LED streetlights?
Thank you, Council President. As council is aware from the presentation I gave at the last meeting, the city has been given a buyout price to purchase back National Grid's lights and lumineers and to replace them through a program with NIPA with all LED lights. So the buyback is step one to start this process, and I'm seeking council approval to correspond with National Grid and let them know of our interest to do this. At any point, all the way up till the purchase and sale and final contract, we are not obligated. But to move forward in this process, to continue to explore it, I'm seeking council approval. I've looked at the finances of our street lighting, what we pay now, and I believe that even through this project and paying off a bond cost at the end of the project, it will be budget neutral and we will have the whole entire city relamped. We will now have some extra responsibilities that we hope to take care of with our existing employees and a contract that will be set in place for more difficult cases for that contractor to come in and fix the lights. I think this will give residents supreme confidence in their neighborhood lights, as all of you know, and all of the complaints you have had in the past, it's very difficult for us to continue to manage the relationship between the lights, the citizens, and National Grid. And I think this is a perfect opportunity for us to take control of those lights, have ownership over them, and have one single point of contact, which would be the superintendent of water and wastewater. Anything to add, Michael?
No. Great. So they'll be brighter, less costly?
Yep, and they all come with a 10-year warranty as well.
More control over them to have our own lights repaired in a quicker fashion.
Yes, yes. And many communities have gone down this path. In fact, it was explored back in 2018, 19, while Matt Worth was here. He decided to move forward with Phase 1, just doing the city-owned lights, save Phase 2. At that point, the buyout cost was only $156,000, so over time, as they replace lights, their assets do get more expensive. And the buyout cost is subject to change all the way up to the date of closing, but National Grid really has been great partners with us, and I expect this will be the cost. The cost is actually, the check will be written by NIPA. They finance the entire project until we're ready to bond for us. We just carry a small interest cost to them, so at this point, for finances, it's a great program that we've entered into, and I would love to see all the lights in the city move to LED and have better quality and better longevity.
So what are you asking us to keep? Support your direction at this point?
Yep. The resolution authorizes the city manager to draft a letter to buy back National Grid's streetlights at a cost of $226,000 and request the preparation of a purchase and sale agreement. That would be the official correspondence back to National Grid.
And this will show up at a future business meeting?
Yes, this will be at the July 11th business meeting for approval.
Okay.
So it's not urgent? I didn't see it on the special business, that's why I wondered. Okay. Any questions or concerns on this?
It's ironic that you bring this up tonight. I just got off the phone before my meeting with a good friend of mine who lives up the street from me. He spent his entire career literally in the lightbulb business. That's what he did, played with commercial football. And he said, "John, the city of Batavia is so far behind right now in that respect." He said, "We should have, you know, we really missed that boat a long time ago with LEDs." It's a long time we do.
Yes, I see.
As a matter of fact, he was calling me to report that the light out in front of his house at 5 Verona is out, and it keeps flickering in and out, flickering in and out.
5 Verona.
And he said, "Well, it's funny that you should talk about that." I said, "I know you spent your career in the lightbulb business," but I said, "We're working on it right now. We actually are in the process of doing it."
I have, like, Elickit noticed, there's two lights out, so it's the dark turn. I mean, that's an intersection, you know? So it's really, they're out all over the place, and there's no rhyme or reason to it. They're just failing, and they're old. So, any other questions? So we in consensus to move this to a future, possibly the July 11th?
Yes.
That gets moved?
Yep.
The water meter replacement program?
Yes, thank you, Council President. After reviewing the capital plans that we had set forth and presented to council and after Michael took over as the superintendent of water and waste, we realized that we were missing a critical project for the infrastructure of our city, specifically changing out of water meters so that they can be radio read. These would be fixed-based radio antennas. They allow reading meters more efficiently and effectively. Right now, and Michael, jump in at any time, the folks that read the meters have to go either to the home to read the meter or use a gun or apparatus to read a street worth of meters. However, a third of our meters are currently radio reads, but we need to replace every meter in the city to be able to have this functionality, to be radio read meters. So there is a grant program. It is called the Green Innovation Grant Program. The town of Batavia received this grant last year, so we did pick their brain on their application, and I have engaged Lobella to write the grant on our behalf, and I'm just looking for approval to submit the consolidated funding application. And furthermore, a second resolution included in the packet related to the same topic is a resolution to declare a Seeker Type 2 action for the water meter upgrades and a... Seeker, yeah, there we go, sorry. I had to get there. There's a few extra pages. So identifying a Type 2 action, the replacement of the existing water meters is Type 2 action under Seeker and requires no further review because it is just a replacement in kind of those meters.
So according to this, it's 3,871 meters?
That is the projection at this point that we believe we'll be able to replace, and we'll be working to determine whether we'll be using our own staff and labor or we'd bring in a contractor so we could get them all done through a large project.
How long is that project?
Really depends on how we go about them. If it's in-house, it could be considerable amount of time. It's really hard to put a timestamp on that.
And if we contracted it out, and from start to finish, three months, maybe? Four months?
Yeah, yeah.
So...
Six months or so probably to get everything done.
So if we do get the grant, I think that's when we do the determination of how busy our folks are in the SMIC department and whether we want them out there or we can contract with a company to do the replacements. But it definitely gives us more accurate readings and it gives them... Pardon?
This will be like real time. That's where I know what you said.
Yes, real time.
We had this conversation already, having been about water leaks and so on. We've had people get their fill, and then they realize there's a faucet turned on somewhere in their backyard, and they don't realize it's been draining thousands of gallons of water. So this way, you would have some kind of program or something managing it here, and then a meter would suddenly go, suddenly a lot of water is being used, and would send a message for you to at least inquire, and it would nip it in the bud of.
Right, and that's what I mean by more accurate. You're absolutely right. So we would be able to see, and our water meter billing specialist would be able to see any of those anomalies in readings much quicker than waiting a month for the data to come through that office, because we do send leak letters out to residents as a courtesy to let them know we're seeing higher-than-average usage.
This would be a lot quicker and sooner, because I know that one gentleman a while back, there was a large water bill, so we had to work something out and figure out the sewage and all that. So this would slow some of that, or improve the process so we'd know sooner that they were leaking somewhere or their vacant house had a water break or something. It would trigger that, right? Okay, go ahead.
I have two questions. Now, the meter boxes on the outside of houses, is there any space that box, and is there any work you can do inside the house, or you just use that? Go through the wire.
So, yeah, we would have to get in to put the new radio head in. We'll have actual new meter bodies as well, and the radio head comes attached, so we can get into the home, install the new meter with the radio head. Normally, what we do is take that box right off the house, so then, you know, once this project's done, the meter reader will know there's no longer houses that he has to go to to plug in, where now we remove those boxes so he knows, okay, there must be a radio in this house, so he doesn't stop there anymore.
Also, a ghost with a meter inside the house?
Yes.
What's outside?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
So the meter that's going to take the meter out, it's inside the house?
Yep.
And then the box, you eliminate the box that's outside?
Eliminate the box that's outside as well.
So even in the basement, they'll be able to get a signal out of people's basements?
Correct, yep. So like Rachel was saying, one-third of our meters currently are already radio reads, where it's just a radio head in the basement that sends out a signal to our meter reader that's either walking or driving by, and he captures it, and now he has a tablet that it gets sent right to.
So is that, well, so you have to make an appointment with people to get their house?
Correct.
Especially people who work here in the day, right? So you probably should consider some kind of evening installations too, in some cases, because some people, you have two family members are working, nobody's home all during the day, or a weekend where people might be home and not at work, and, you know, some people just can't be home.
Sure.
We're also trying to double up and partner with this program. We will be launching in the next few weeks a mailer to residents about lead pipes and checking to see what material your pipes are inside your home in preparation of the rule change, the lead and copper rule change from the federal government. So we'll be doing mailers out to people to self-assess their pipes and get us back information. But while we're in 3,100 homes, we also can check while we're there to see if there is any lead-type pipes in the home. So it'll serve a dual purpose as we move forward. We're trying to publish a GIS map in the near future where you can upload your information specifically to it, and you can look and see where any type of lead systems might exist in the city. So that is a really large undertaking that we are just trying to get a hold of and let citizens know, you know, if they do have a lead pipe. Right now, we have amazing corrosion control in our water. There's nothing to be worried about, but we do want to find funds through the federal government to help replace those pipes over time.
Any other questions?
Any regards to that, though? Just for the public's peace of mind, if the city was in a household and determined there's lead pipes in that residence, that residence will have financial help to correct that problem?
We would hope to get so through, we put in a congressional direct spending application through Senator Schumer's office and Senator Gillibrand's office, asking for $1.5 million to start that process. At this point, we're not mandated to help that resident change out those pipes, but we'd sincerely like to be able to fund any type of replacements inside the home, barring legal agreements that we'll have on the homeowner's side. There is, you know, with the new rule, right now, we also will offer testing of that water, and we can also offer filtration pitchers until such time that it can be replaced, or the homeowner could go ahead and have their pipes replaced as well. So it'll be a multi-pronged approach.
Is the homeowner obligated to replace those lead pipes, or is that their own personal decision to make?
I don't believe they're obligated to replace those pipes, but we want to move it, just like the lead paint-type grants that the county gets, we want to come through with funding to replace any type of lead pipes throughout the city. Right now, again, if there are lead pipes in the home, we will offer testing on a periodic basis to show the water's safety and quality.
How does it affect rentals? It might be one thing for a homeowner, okay, I know what the risks are for rental people. They may cause problems and say, hey, there's lead pipes, this has got to be fixed. Do they get priority? Are there special provisions for them? How does that affect rentals?
Well, we'd look back to the owner of the rental property to move forward with any type of replacement plan and try to work with that owner of the property so that we could come through. And like I said, the hope is that with the grant funds we get, not only will we look at any lead service inside the city and the city's pipes, we'd hope to help any residents that we've identified that may have them. Michael, you've said that you've been in many, many homes and barely see a lead service?
I've personally never seen one. Billy Davis, who was here 37 years, my uncle before that, we've never come across a lead service in the house or on the private side. We have seen them on the city side or the public side, but never in the home, so.
So it's mostly copper, you would say?
Copper, galvanized, pipe, plastic, those are your three common service line materials that you see on the private side.
I have one more question. If the water comes and puts the meter in, and let's say the meter's faulty or the connections are leaking, it's not the homeowner's responsibility now, it's whoever did it, because it wasn't leaking before you changed the meter?
Absolutely.
So, okay.
I understand the city's responsible from the meter to the street, are they not?
So, no, it's actually from your curb box to your valve inside, that's the homeowner's responsibility. From the curb box to the water main is the city's responsibility.
But in this case, because you guys are putting them in there, but obviously, it's got to be done right and not leaking and any problems.
Yeah, and it actually, it's, the way it's written up, your valve in your home is supposed to withstand any routine maintenance that the city performs on our water meter. So, I mean, it does, obviously, I mean, a lot of valves in the city are old, and it has occurred before where you go in and you shut somebody's water off and, you know, it starts dripping, or, but obviously, the cities, we work with them, we do it with them to help the situation.
Okay, anyone else? So are we in consensus to move the grant and the Seeker, because it kind of goes together, to the next conference meeting? Or, well, not the next conference meeting, next business meeting, but will it be to July 11th or will it be a future one?
It'll be July 11th, so we can make the grant deadline, which I believe is July 22nd.
Okay, so it'll be July 11th. Are we in consensus for that?
Yeah.
Okay. The SRO contract, I've been told, is not quite complete yet.
Correct.
So that'll reappear at a future conference meeting when that does, and we want to make sure that it's all proper and both sides may have a chance to review it, so it's not ready, so we'll just remove that from today's conference. The next one would be the Jackson Square bid rejection?
Yes. Thank you, Council President. The bids for the renovation of Jackson Square were received and opened on April 22nd. As we've discussed before, the first time we put bids out, they came in over the budget we have, which is $750,000 from a DRI grant, which is also administered by the Department of State. We released the bids, and we did have a low bidder at $654,000, which was Mark Serone Incorporated, and council approved the award of those bids. On May 27th, the contractor sent a letter to Brett Frank, increasing the amount of their bid to $847,000 based on some market factors, and they refused to proceed with the project as they bitted claiming mistakes and the need to adjust the price. So with that, we're seeking council to approve this resolution and move it to tonight's special business meeting. We're declaring Mark Serone in default of the bid bond and that we rescind the contract award to Serone and that we also reject the remaining bids as they do not fit in with our project financing.
George, is this even legal to do that? It's almost, it would appear that once they found out what the other bids were, then they mysteriously up their bid to be just under their next bid, because the next bid is very close to, it's only $30,000 off.
We certainly have a lot of concerns with the communication that took place. There was some back and forth between the architects on behalf of the city and the contractor. At this point, we haven't been able to get a contract with this contractor per the bid, which is why we're asking council to move in the direction of opposing.
I mean, because I don't know if legally we could even change the bid amount like that. Once it's, once you bid, you don't just up the bids. I'm just trying to get educated here for the future.
Yeah.
So when bids, that's it. They don't later act and beg, oh, by the way, I realized you have more money to spend, so we're just up our bid price. I mean, you can't.
Yeah. In general, I would say that's accurate. You have to comply with the bid. That's the reason the bid bond is issued as security, to comply with the bid that was presented pursuant to the general municipal law. You know, there are some other nuances to this, and without getting into all the granular details in this forum, we've spoken internally between the city manager and DPW director, myself, and the architect, and this is the path we're going to try to move forward with, to try to get a project that we can put out for bid and have contractors propose on it and get the project done for the city, so.
Anyone else have any questions? So are we in consensus to move that to tonight's business meeting for above to reject that bid?
Definitely.
Counsel President, if I might, just to be clear, we're not rejecting the bid of the low bidder at the time, Mark Serone. We are rescinding the award to Mark Serone and rejecting the other two bids that were submitted on the project, just so the record's clear on that.
So rescinding and rejecting the other two?
Correct. Thank you.
Okay, that moves to tonight's business meeting. The Audit Committee appointments?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Every year, we do ask for two council members to serve as part of the audit committee. We also have this year Nicholas Harris, Mark Staley, and Paul Batekli, who have terms to 2024. I have had correspondence from Councilmember Bayakowski, who would like to serve as one of the members of the audit committee. He has done so for many, many years, and so I guess I'd ask if there's any other members that would like to serve. It's one meeting.
Bob's offered to take it if no one wants it, but I mean, he can pass it around to anyone else. Others, if they want to get involved and learn about the finances.
Hi, what?
Tammy, if you want to, sure. Tammy, now, anyone else? I guess it'll be Tammy and Bob then?
Okay, yep, and it's just one meeting in August, September, depending on when we have everything together. We, the auditors come in, they review the financial statements, the committee asks questions, there's a lot of dialogue, and then subsequently, they do write a letter and recommendation to city council to then approve the final audit.
And if I'm not mistaken, I think it's an evening meeting, so it wouldn't affect any daytime employment or whatever, so.
Thank you.
Okay, you'll write that down and put that on there. And now, are we in consensus to move the rest of this to tonight's special business so that we can get that committee appointed?
Yeah.
Okay, that goes. Health insurance budget amendment?
Thank you, Council President. I'm disappointed because I came to you at the last meeting and said that we did not have any overage in health care this year. However, we had what's called a lags claim report that came in in the last two weeks, which basically takes, as you know, in health care, not everything can end right at the end of a fiscal year. There's always claims that are coming in, so while it's not a lot, I'm still slightly disappointed that we do need to ask for a budget amendment to use the health insurance fund recovery to cover this expense of $26,676.70 to balance the health fund.
Any questions on that? Are we in consensus to move that to tonight's special business?
Yes.
That gets moved. Motion to adjourn. Mr. Canaly? Seconded by Mr. Beely. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Canaly?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Okay. And I'll call to order the special business meeting. Resolution 562022, the sidewalk construction project, Sir Beely. 572022, the committees and boards, Mr. Richmond. 582022, the health budget adjustment, Mr. Richmond. And 592022, the rescinding of the bid. Mr. Canaly. Okay, 562022, Mr. Beely, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to adjourn that with Masters Edge Inc. for sidewalks, construction project 2022.
Seconded by, Mr. Briggs. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Resolution 572022, Mr. Richmond, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to appoint members to various city committees and boards.
Seconded by, Mr. Beely. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Richmond?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Resolution 582022, Mr. Richmond, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to authorize budget amendment for the health insurance fund for the 2122 fiscal year.
Seconded by, Mr. Briggs. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Resolution 592022, Mr. Canaly, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to rescind award of construction contract to Mark Serone Incorporated and reject bids for construction services for the enhancement of the Jackson Square project.
Seconded by, Mr. Richmond. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Canaly?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Okay. Do you think it's an executive session?
Thank you.
Whereas Article 7, Section 105, 1F of the Public Officers' Law permits the legislative body of municipality to enter into executive session to discuss the medical, financial, credit, or employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation. Now therefore be it resolved by this council.